...well know is a crucial step in generating the commercial revenue that will fund so much of what we want to do in every single neighborhood of this city. Jacksonville has the privilege of being an NFL town, and this deal will ensure our citizens can enjoy the benefits of that privilege for decades to come. At the same time, as you will hear, it will also infuse much-needed dollars into the historic East Side and into our entire community. Let me be clear on a few things before we get into the details of this deal. It will not only have an enormous economic impact on Jacksonville to the tune of $26 billion over the life of this lease, but the NFL has been adamant. If we want to keep the Jaguars in Jacksonville, and we do, this stadium is a mandatory step. We came into these negotiations with a current lease that was frankly heavily weighted in favor of the Jaguars. We said from the start, this lease had to be very different. It had to be fair to the taxpayers. We asked the Jaguars to meet us halfway, and I am grateful to tell you tonight that that is exactly what they have done. I want to thank Mark and Shaw for their willingness to move light years from the previous lease, creating with us an agreement that is good for Jacksonville, good for the Jaguars, and one that will commit the team to our city for 30 years while guaranteeing we will keep at least as many home games for our fans as we have now. In addition to the construction costs, which we have agreed to split 50/50, the Jaguars have agreed to cover all cost overruns. And when you see the numbers of every project in recent times, you will see that is a very big deal indeed. The community benefit portion of this agreement is also historic and the largest of its kind in the history of the NFL. Again, I asked the Jaguars to make a much larger commitment than they initially proposed and said if they would, we would match their efforts and address critical quality-of-life issues for all of our citizens: affordable housing, workforce development, homelessness, and parks and recreation citywide, with deep additional investments from the Jaguars into economic development of the historic East Side. In addition, the Jaguars have agreed to invest another $100 million in commercial development next to what is already the single-largest private investment in the history of the downtown with the Four Seasons. When all is said and done, this investment will far surpass that. Mike Weinstein has done an incredible job from the city side, and he will tell you he has had a willing and eager partner on the other side of the table. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike and Mark now to dig into the details of this transformative public-private partnership, and I'll come back to wrap things up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Council President Salem, thank you all for giving us the opportunity to be here. I know everyone is going to want to talk and dig in to what the deal is, but before we do that, I wanted to try to set the stage, if I could, particularly from the perspective of the Jacksonville Jaguars, particularly why we care, why we are participating, and why we want to be your partner. We've heard it before about the potential of Jacksonville and whether we will take advantage of our opportunities to realize our potential. I'm sure you heard that from me many times. Two things about potential. First, be assured, the world sees our potential. When NFL teams visit EverBank Stadium, when we have concert promoters in town, as we just saw with the major shows here this month, the acts that come through Daily's place, they all enjoy their time here in Jacksonville, and almost to a person, they mention the potential. They also mention the progress. And that's the second thing, progress. We are making progress. The shipyards development, downtown apartments, our metrics, we're one of the hottest markets in the nation today by any measure: housing, jobs, startups, tech, cost of living, best places to live. The Wall Street Journal, in fact, just rates us as the best job market in Florida and number two in the entire United States. We are starting to see the potential realized. We're growing. We have plenty of room to grow. We have spirit, and there's a lot still left to be unlocked. And we have an amazing opportunity in front of us with the stadium in future, which will represent the largest public infrastructure investment in Jacksonville's history and the largest private investment in the history of downtown Jacksonville. We're excited about what's possible with the stadium in the future, and hope you are as well. But one last observation: when people think about the Jaguars, they think about Shaw, they think about the Khan family. We would not be able to do this without their support. They think about our players. But we're a lot more than just that. We have people on our staff who are all DuVall. They've lived here their entire lives, or been with the team all 30 seasons. People like Alisa Abbott, Drew Frick, Will Tuckwild, and Whitney Meyer, who grew up here and have chosen to stay here, and many others, who being a Jaguar is all they know. And we have people, Chad Johnson, Megan Parry, Mark Sirota, and even me, who were blessed with the opportunity to come to Jacksonville, even though we could have worked anyplace else in the entire United States. We've moved here, we've fallen in love with this community, and it's a place we never want to leave. So we too think a lot about what the future of this community holds. We are really excited about what the future holds. We can't wait to get going, and we will do everything we can to make sure that your review is comprehensive, and anything that needs to do, we will do. It doesn't come as a big surprise that we're talking about the stadium reaching the end of its useful life. In fact, this chart shows that every single NFL stadium in the National Football League since the inception of the Jaguars back in the mid-'90s, either a new stadium's been built, there's been major renovations, three teams have left their cities to solve their stadium problems, there's two stadiums under construction that leaves the Jaguars. We've been through this process. I don't need to belabor this. We spent a lot of time, starting back in 2016, trying to get ahead of this issue because we knew those cities that found themselves in a bad situation with their NFL team, they all had something in common: the lease was winding down, and there was not a stadium solution, and Shaw was committed to not let that happen here in Jacksonville. We talked to all the stakeholders. We found out what they like about the stadium, what they don't like about the stadium. We held a nationwide design competition, selected an architect in partnership with the city, and then went on a '27-'28 meeting community huddle process last summer and learned a lot and modified the plan accordingly. And now we're anxious to begin in partnership with the mayor additional community huddles over the course of the next several weeks. Who did we talk to? We talked to everyone that matters, including people at the Gator Bowl, people at the University of Florida, people at the University of Georgia, concert promoters, and asked them the questions: "Why don't you bring more shows to Jacksonville?" We got very consistent feedback. This is what people want to see in the stadium. They want to see shade on all the seats. They want to have improved airflow, cover from rain, easier to get from level to level, wider concourses, more and better restrooms, more in upgraded concessions, including local food offerings, more air-conditioned space, not only to meet the needs of our attendees at events, but almost more importantly, that this building can be a 365-a-day building where we have plenty of space for meetings, for trade shows and the like, and flexible capacity, so that we can meet the capacity of the Florida-Georgia game without having to have the city incur the multimillion-dollar expense to bring in thousands of temporary seats. So the design, many of you have seen, this is designed. And by the way, the renderings that you see will be memorialized as part of our agreement with the city. What you see is what will be built. In addition, there's a 42-plus-page program document that is memorialized as part of our agreement with the city that specifies exactly what will be built in the stadium, from the lights to the amount of finished air-conditioned space to the width of the concourses. So people ask for these things, this design delivers it. Concourse is more than doubled in size, 60% increase in the escalators, 100% increase in elevators, 156,000 incremental square feet of air-conditioned space. The building gets about 110,000 square feet bigger. Food and beverage points of sale are doubled, restrooms all renovated, expanded with 12 new restrooms. And one of the most important issues is getting our fans in a comfortable position, particularly during day games during the months of, particularly the month of September. The fixed roof and the design that has been chosen will lower the temperature inside a seating bowl by an average of 15 degrees. The mayor mentioned the economic impact, $26 billion over the 30-year commitment of the Jaguars to be here. And just as an aside, I think that there will be some commentary about what potentially could happen here. And when Jacksonville received an NFL team, many believed that was against all odds. And when they realize that Jacksonville's going to keep that team for another 30 years, they may believe that was against all odds as well, but not because we don't believe in Jacksonville. It's because other people don't recognize how special a place this is. Economic impact during construction, $2.4 billion. We commissioned this economic impact report. The city hired a consultant to do a peer review of this economic impact study, independent from ours. Their results were actually higher than what our report was. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mike to talk a little bit more about the structure of the deal.
Thank you. Mike Weinstein, and I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. President, to be here. We'll take you, I'll do some, and Mark will come back. I'll come back a couple of times, taking you through the lease itself and the agreement itself. The first slide you see, basically, when we started, we wanted to definitely make sure we had a fair and balanced agreement to make sure that not only the citizens would feel good about it, but his fans and others would feel good about it as well. We tried to protect the taxpayers. We tried to secure the opportunity for Florida-Georgia to stay here, the Gator Bowl to stay here, to do other events here that we haven't been able to do, and also to do a community-wide benefit, and that's what the CBA is all about. The next slide basically just shows you what we'll be going through. The team funding contribution will be much more substantial and much more varied than they have been in the current lease. There'll be elements of exposure that we'll talk about to make sure that the taxpayers and the Jaguars are protected. The capital and maintenance plan, and also lots of operations and utility as well. We'll talk a couple of times about the condition of the stadium and how to prevent inadequate funding in the future for the stadium. All of our facilities, the arena, the baseball, Performing Arts Center, whatever we have, government doesn't necessarily take care of them well, and the stadium is a perfect example of deferred, deferred, deferred maintenance, and basically it's going to come back and bite us. The next slide gets into the funding to a certain extent. You've heard, other NFL facilities have been talked about, about being built new, being renovated and what have you, and our $1.4 billion is less than those that our peers are doing around the country. When the Jaguars and the city started, we talked about potentially a new facility, we talked about seat licensing, we talked about the entertainment zone, we talked about a number of things and came to the conclusion that, as far as Jacksonville today, what's best is to do the stadium first and to deal with the enterprise, the entertainment zone second, and not do seat licensing and not do a new stadium. It was just sort of beyond both of our capabilities. As far as the obligation, the financial obligation, we have two for the city. As I said, we have not met all of our obligations over the decades for keeping the NFL facility up to NFL standards. We have three more seasons to play, we have things that we have to do to prepare it for renovation, and the Jaguars and the city have come to the conclusion, there's about $150 million of things that we're obligated to do that will benefit the renovation and get credit towards the renovation and bring the renovation additional cost down to 1.25. And the 1.25 is divided 50% Jaguars, 50% Jacksonville, once we have met the obligations that we were supposed to do all along. As far as the funding goes, I want to take you through a two-step process, and I'll illustrate our recommendation for how we meet our obligation. And I'm going to take you back a little bit historically to begin with. The Better Jacksonville Plan, as you remember, was passed by referendum for 30 years. It added a half a penny to the sales tax to do a wide variety of projects, and we've been working through those projects. The prior administration came up with an idea that maybe they should end the Better Jacksonville Plan earlier than 2030, even though that was the recommendation in the referendum. With that recommendation, the city and the council took projects away from the Better Jacksonville Plan and the funding that the half penny was to provide, and put those projects in the capital improvement plan and required borrowing to make those happen. Pay-as-you-go is better than borrowing for it. And then, after that referendum, the people voted for a pension referendum to adequately fund the police and fire pension fund, the general employees fund, and continue those 30 years after the Better Jacksonville Plan was done. And those 30 years, whether they begin in 2030 or whether they begin in 2026, will adequately fund the pension programs. You can't get more than 30 years, so starting earlier doesn't benefit the programs. They still will get 30 years of pension funds and probably will be fully funded in '24, '25 of the 30 years. Won't take all 30. If the city of Jacksonville reverses what they thought about a couple of years ago and puts those projects they took out of Better Jacksonville and put in the CIP borrowing and put them back in Better Jacksonville, and take similar projects that are in the CIP for borrowing and put them into the Better Jacksonville Plan, which our lawyers and outside lawyers said can easily be done with council approval, we could take $600 million in our CIP program, which is now a billion three of authorized spending. We can take $600 billion of that, put it back in the Better Jacksonville Plan, and pay for it as you go, and free up $600 million of anticipated borrowing. The mayor will have other recommendations when she submits the budget in July to further reduce the CIP obligation. But doing the $600 million is an easy step, a legitimate step, approved by the lawyers, and would be substantially beneficial financially. As far as the stadium goes, the stadium will be built over four years. We're splitting 50/50 as the expenses come in with the Jaguars. It's our recommendation to put in the CIP over the next four years according to the construction schedule and according to the needs of the funding into the CIP program. So the next budget year, following, following up to the '28 budget year, we will put in the share that would be spent that particular year into the CIP program. And as you know, as we spend money on CIP projects, the following year we borrow to replenish those dollars. When expenses come up for a CIP project, we pay it out of the funds we have. The end of each year, we borrow to replenish those funds, and each year, the goal is to borrow less than we pay back as far as debt, so we continue to reduce our debt. So that's the recommendation on funding. It's a two-steps process, but financially, the Better Jacksonville, even if we weren't doing a stadium, we should consider putting back into the Better Jacksonville Plan and using. It's about $125, $130 million a year that we will give up if we end it early. And there's no need to. Go back to what the referendum was originally approved as, is a 30-year program. Next couple of slides is just a comparison as to how our lease relates to others around the NFL, the percentages of other communities that they have to put in to their stadium, new or renovated. The next one basically is NFL again, the cost overruns of those stadium projects. The next one is really important, and the mayor alluded to it, is the cost overruns. Cost overruns are substantial, and the projects that the Jacksonville Jaguars have done within the community has partnered with the city, each of those projects have had cost overruns that you can see in the chart. And the project we're about to undertake, if approved, is a monster, and they have taken that on as an obligation. And also, to meet the desires of the fan base and the community, moving to just being away one season rather than two seasons adds to the risk to the Jaguars, because if they left for two seasons, it would be an easier build, a more timely build. It's a little more complicated being away just one season, and that's an added burden that they take on because they do the cost overruns.
One of the things that was critically important to Shaw and the team going into this is that we didn't end up where we are right now, where you spend money on a stadium, then you don't adequately fund the capital or the maintenance. This was really a prerequisite from our perspective. Would not have done the agreement without having some certainty that funds will be available. If you look at the left-hand side of this chart, this basically summarizes the $10.3 million in ongoing capital and maintenance expenses from 2023. What's in black is the proceeds from the bed tax. There's two cents of the bed tax that are dedicated to capital improvements in the sports complex, with the majority of it going to the stadium. When that's not sufficient, then dollars either have, dollars generally, if they're capital, get into the CIP, and if they're maintenance, they come out of the general budget. And typically, there is underfunding, and that's where kicking the can down the road has left us. What we wanted to do as it relates to the new agreement and have agreed is that, number one, this is five years down the road, we've seen that the bed tax has grown. Using that same two cents to allocate a greater portion of that to the stadium, we think will cover 75% of the capital and maintenance needs, and then whatever's left, the city and the Jaguars split. But we weren't just interested in 2028, we were interested in what's going to happen over the 30 years of the lease. What we've arrived at is we've agreed at $15 million a year, growing at 1%. The projections we have done, including what the anticipated maintenance and capital needs will be for the stadium over the 30 years, we believe that that will be sufficient to meet the needs, and as such, are prepared to commit to a 30-year lease in a new stadium. Stadium operating and utility expenses, same sort of scenario. Right now, the city is responsible for the overwhelming majority of that, almost 87%. The Jaguars are responsible for 13% in the form of our rent payment. And under the new stadium lease, we wanted to come up with much more of a user model, that those people that go to the stadium, those that purchase tickets, that that will generate, and those dollars will stay in the building. So if you begin at the top of this chart, that 28%, we anticipate that the stadium will be hosting more and more events. And what we've agreed, somewhat of a landmark agreement in the National Football League, we have agreed to partner 100% of those events with the city of Jacksonville, and both of us have agreed that any profits from those events will go back into the stadium. So events come, we work on them together, if they're profitable, the profits go back into the stadium. We think that will cover 28% of the annual expenses. The second piece is surcharges. Fans that attend Jaguar games currently pay surcharges on their tickets, surcharges on the parking. That will continue into the future, and 100% of those user fees then will stay in the stadium to help pay for the operating expenses. Jaguars will continue to pay an annual lease payment, which will stay with the stadium, and then if we're short in terms of what we need, again, we split that 50/50 with the city. So if you look at the entirety of that, this is the carrying cost of the stadium as it relates to capital maintenance, stadium operations, and utilities. As it's currently constructed, the bed tax covers about a quarter of that, the Jaguars' rent covers 6% with the city responsible for the remaining 2/3. Under the new agreement, 43% would come from the bed tax, 25% would come from rent surcharges and non-NFL events, leaving just 15% for the city and the Jaguars equally.
We're like a wrestling tag team here, the Mark and Mike team, excuse me. Two things I want to make sure that you do understand, to follow up on the funding. The $600 million, I wanted that just to digest a little bit. That $600 million that won't be borrowed saves the citizens of Jacksonville $1.5 billion in debt service over the 30 years. So that's the impact of that particular idea. So we'll get back to it as we move through, but it's quite substantial. Also, hopefully, you're getting a sense that there's a partnership here that wasn't before. We're partnering in a half a dozen of the elements of this lease. We try desperately to get incentives that we both could share in those partnership ideas. This particular slide just reminds us that it is, in fact, a 30-year lease. Jaguars started off with their material at 25, 20, 25. It's a 30-year lease, and we have a substantial non-relocation agreement. They're going to be here, they're going to stay here, and if, in fact, something occurs and they don't, there's substantial damages and efforts that go into it if that particular thing happens. The next slide is just an example of the change in the relationship with the Jaguars. Right now, we pay game day expenses for the season, it's a little over $7 million. In the future, we'll be paying just police and fire responsibilities in game day, which will be about $2 million, and the Jaguars will pick up the other costs in game day expenses. Just another example. The next slide is an illustration of rent across the NFL. We're basically a little higher than most, but the rent across the NFL isn't substantial, but we are gaining rent, but it goes back in. There's a tremendous amount of effort going back into the stadium. Rent's one of those items that goes back in to help maintain it. Mark mentioned the relationship we're going into now as far as the non-NFL events, one of the partnership elements that we described before. It's really important. The way it is today, there's some revenue streams that may or may not be available. The Jaguars have a lot of control over suites and premium seats and what have you. All that goes away in that every event, everything is open. The profit and loss, there's no revenue streams that are not available for non-NFL events, where now some non-NFL events can't get to some revenue streams. Not only will we share in the profits and putting it back into the stadium, but if the profits are such that it's more than necessary to do the maintaining of the stadium, the city and the Jaguars share those profits in cash 50/50. One of the things, if you've been in the stadium in the area where the Jaguars have offices, they're quite substantial. They have a large percentage of the space on the west side, on the first floor. They're not going to be in the new stadium, they're going to be in either Miller Electric or the office building that they're building. They're in this building now, rent-free. So this space will be renovated, turned into events, space for meetings and what have you, so it's adding to the opportunities to use this facility for lots of other things. It's a nice gesture that they, you know, basically are willing to move, and basically in their own building, that prevents them from renting out that space to others.
One thing I should have mentioned earlier, as part of our early negotiations, we recognize that, you know, ultimately, if we get to a deal, it should be compared to comparable markets to Jacksonville. So what you're going to see, when you see these teams up here, those are the eight smallest NFL markets with the exception of Green Bay. Consistent with our current lease, the city will have approval rights for naming rights, and we will agree on any prohibited advertising categories, but also consistent with our current lease. And consistently across the National Football League, the Jaguars will retain all NFL game day advertising and naming rights revenue. Parking remains relatively unchanged. This was sort of an interesting aspect of bifurcating any development outside the stadium. From the stadium renovation itself, we certainly hope and believe that that type of development has to happen at some point, but agreed to the city's request to separate these early on. What it did is it eliminated the number-one concern we received from our supporters when we did all of our huddles last year, which is, "What's going to happen to my parking?" So parking doesn't change. Certainly hope it changes at some point in the future, but that'll be subject to negotiations with DIA, the mayor's office, and ultimately here for the city council. International games, a lot of talk about this. This is not specifically addressed in our current lease. It will be addressed in the new lease, and basically, we're protecting the status quo, which is, we will have the option, not the requirement, to play up to one game a year. And as exists right now, the National Football League has a requirement that they can ask all 32 teams to move a game from their home market as part of the International Series, a maximum of once every four years. They have not asked us to do that yet. We haven't shown the inclination to play more than one game in the past, and this certainly creates a floor that there will never be fewer, fewer than seven home games each year. In all likelihood, there will be more.
We're getting towards the end, Council President. Stadium management, the relatively recent NFL agreements throughout the country, the teams have taken on more and more responsibility for the building, and we opted for that choice in our negotiations. In the future of this In the future, if this lease goes through the way it is today, they will basically take on the responsibility of maintaining and operating the facility, which will prevent 30 years of arguments that we've had over the years as to what an NFL stadium is supposed to be. We jointly decide on the budgets for maintenance, we jointly decide on the budgets for operating and utilities, but they maintain the building, and that's basically a major change, but one that's probably necessary. We, if, if the Jaguars decide to hire an outside manager, operator like ASM or competitor, we jointly decide who that will be. So we're in it together, and we manage it together, but they have the responsibility of keeping it up, so we won't be having arguments throughout the years as to what ultimately needs to be done. But remember, the budgets each year for maintenance, utilities, and capital are approved by both of us, so we have a responsibility to make sure this facility is maintained. There's more money going into this facility, the Jaguars are putting money into the facility that they didn't before, but it's because we're trying to maintain it and get 30 years useful life. We mentioned Florida, Georgia. Between the two of us, Mark and I, we've been in constant contact with both schools, they're engaged and involved with every decision as far as the layout of the stadium, they agree to the capacity, they're very excited about the future, and both schools have committed to me that as soon as this is a done deal, that we would start on the extension agreements going beyond. The agreements we have now with the Gator Bowl in Florida, Georgia, and the '25, so we would be negotiating a '28 and on extension. But they're in it, and they're very excited about it. I'm going to return just one more time, and I'm done.
This is the last time you'll hear from me. This is the community benefits agreement, and I'm going to talk a little bit about, there's two elements to it, it's what happens during construction, and as we've consistently done with our partnerships with the city, we're trying to do all things that can ensure that the community feels the benefit of these construction projects. Construction workforce development programs, everyone knows that there's a shortage in the construction field these days. We introduced a program called Construction Ready with the Miller Electric Center, was very successful, we will continue to focus on the workforce development issues in the construction industry. JSAP, we have always been willing and ready to accept goals, and we've exceeded each those goals each and every time we've done a partnership with the city, and obviously we want to keep as much work local, not only in terms of companies that are local, but the individuals that work on the job site, and also, perhaps even more important, the permanent jobs that then follow. Construction Ready Program was a great success with Miller Electric Center, graduated 87 construction students, and basically, if, if, if someone would go through this program, it was free of charge, we targeted certain neighborhoods, we brought the training into those neighborhoods, people were, those individuals that went through training were guaranteed a job. We had 87, we actually have 27 that have moved on to doing work right across the street. I want to say one thing if I can, because this is the last time I'll be up here. Mike's going to go through the, the ongoing community benefits agreement, I know that's of great interest to each and every one of you, and it's great interest to us. The history of those negotiations were, as the mayor said upfront, we had proposed a, the largest community benefits program in the history of the National Football League, and the city came to us and said, we'd like you to make it bigger, and we want to invest along with you. And we looked at what they were doing, and we noticed that in addition to things that we're already focused on, community development, affordable housing, homelessness, workforce development, that there was a tangible commitment to downtown. That is really important to us. It's important to us because now Shahad, between these two projects, will be investing in excess of $1 billion downtown, and we've, we've always believed that there was a real commitment to get things done downtown, we continue to believe that, but that commitment to do the park systems downtown was a very important part of our decision to raise our, our community benefits agreement from 100 to 150 million. So thank you very much.
We probably spent almost as much time on the community benefit agreement than we did on the lease, Mark and I. The next slide illustrates the $150 million from the city and $150 million from the Jaguars. The $150 million from the city, 80% of the $150 million from the city goes to countywide or downtown. The remaining 20% goes to out east. The 80% from the city that goes to countywide and the parks, basically 50 million goes towards the development of a countywide workforce, affordable housing, and homelessness program. Just to give you a sense of the workforce, you know I had time with Kids Hope Alliance and others, it's all about the barriers, so many people want to get upskilled and get into better jobs, but they can't get to where the training is, they can't get the equipment, they can't get childcare. The upfront money is to help the community build workforce development programs throughout the county, not just in the certain locations, it'll be spread out throughout the county. Homelessness you're familiar with, affordable housing you're familiar with. The remaining part of the 80% from the city's 150 goes to finally finish the funding so we can open up River Place, the Riverfront Plaza Park, Shipyard West Park, Metro Park, and turn the Flex Field into an exhibit, meeting facility, convention facility. Those are the four that Mark's basically relating to specifically, that's the kind of investment they're looking for, and finally, they'll be fully funded and get prepared to be finally opened. The remaining 20% of the city's 150 goes to seed and start a economic development, homelessness, and affordable, affordable housing program in out east. In addition to the 30 million from, from our dollars, it's 30 million is the 20%, the Jaguars' 150 is split evenly between out east for economic development, homelessness and affordable housing, and countywide workforce, affordable housing and homelessness. As the Jaguar money comes in over time, it's split 50/50 into those efforts. They were very interested in their neighborhood to the north, they wanted to make sure, two things, downtown commitment and do something substantial for out east. We felt that if we're going to do out east, we need to do it in a way that it's a pilot project, and if it's successful, we can move it to other parts of the community. But rest assured, the majority of the city's 150 again goes to countywide activities. Mark had mentioned, and I think the mayor may have also, that part of this is, as we went on and on with discussion, and the mayor really wanted to get a head start on the entertainment zone, she wasn't happy that we, we didn't take care of it in, in, up till now. But the Jaguars have agreed to continue to develop along the property that they're already doing, the Four Seasons in their office building, and as said before, build a minimum of $100 million development next to the Four Seasons to continue that extension. The city felt that's something we really wanted to do, and we agreed that we would participate. They already have property rights to that particular piece of property they're talking about, and that development would be done no later than four years after the stadium opened. Next steps was mentioned, that not only would you have to formally approve this if you desire, but then it goes to the NFL. They have a meeting in October, it takes 75% of the owners to agree a lease agreement for any team throughout the, throughout the area, and that's going to have to happen in October if, 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 if at all. If that does happen, construction, as I said before, would begin basically February, March of '25, and then we're off, we're off to the races. But I do want to end with this, and this, and I'll bring the mayor back up, that a lot of people feel that the decision is, we do the Jaguar lease, we spend $600 or $700 million, or we don't do the Jaguar lease and we don't spend any money. If we don't do the Jaguar lease, we're still spending hundreds of millions of dollars if we want to use the facility. The facility's 30 years old, it's been neglected, if we want Florida, Georgia to stay, and the Gator Bowl to stay and have other events, we can't just let it sit. So it's not, it's not no money or a lot of money, it's, it's a lot of money or substantial money, but not quite the same. So, so we, we need to make sure you as a group, but also the community understands that it's our building, if we want to use it, we have to continue to invest in it, and we're behind in that investment. With that, I'll bring the mayor up to close, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much, gentlemen, I'll be, I'll be very brief, I just want to reiterate what a wonderful process truly this has been, and what an impactful moment this is for our city. I'm so grateful for all of you spending the time to, to pay attention tonight, you all have all the information, we'll be happy to answer any questions you have. President Salem, I know you're going to be joining us in, in our community huddles as we go forward to, to, to share this with the public, I appreciate that very much. And I just want to say that, you know, this is our opportunity to meet a moment. I believe in Jacksonville, I know you believe in Jacksonville, the Jaguars have shown they do, and I don't believe this is a time for half-measures on our part, this is a time to determine the city that we want to be. It's our opportunity to show that we can live up to the moniker of being, in fact, the bold new city of the South, and I look forward to being bold with you. So thank you so much for your time, and at this point, any members of the media that still have questions, we'll, we will meet you outside in the atrium and, and take you upstairs for, for anything further, and of course, we're always available for further questions. Thank you for letting us go for a little bit, I appreciate you.
Thank you, mayor. I know there may be some people that are exiting, I would just...